Please. Greetings all, it is August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four at six thirty P M. This is the regular meeting of the Wood Creek City Council and I am on this paperwork. So yeah, we're good, right for a moment of silence and then we'll stand for a little bit. I pledge allegiance to the law for the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored in Texas by a confided allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Be so kind to the fellow.
Yes, sir. Mayor DeFrasco.
Here.
Mayor Portem, there are five, sir. Councilmember Lania Bailey, here. Councilmember Chris Garrett, here. Councilmember Bob Hamrick.
Here.
Councilmember Krista Richardson.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So we do have public comments and then we will start with the big one.
Okay. I think my wife is gonna cede me a little bit of time because I don't think I can do this in three minutes. I'm addressing the council about item number eight. The speed cushion portion specifically of item number eight is completely unnecessary and a waste of our city's funds at a time when we should direct our budget toward much more valuable city improvements. I ask the council to that this portion of the omnibus engineering bid project be stricken, saving at least fifty to sixty thousand dollars. There is no need for pervasive traffic calming measures. We do not have a systemic speed nor traffic problem in Wood Creek. I spent a lot of time exploring the data about traffic accidents in Wood Creek, mining text dot data since two thousand three. Over these twenty years, we have never had a traffic fatality in our city and only two serious injuries. One in two thousand twenty, when a seventy-six-year-old woman became ill while driving at an otherwise safe speed and hit a mailbox at Eight Brook Hollow Drive, plus a second injury accident in two thousand three for which details were not available. Over these twenty years, there have been thirty-six accidents with five injuries and just these two serious injuries. No pedestrian has ever been injured. Of the twenty-two accidents since two thousand fourteen, two-thirds of them happened on Wood Creek Drive. The only two incidents near any of the proposed speed cushion locations, one on Wood Creek Drive hit a mailbox and one on Brook Hollow Drive hit a parked car. No accident has ever happened on Augusta Drive. Three-quarters of the crashes are one-vehicle accidents, usually involving mailboxes, trees, or the bridge embankment at the western end of Wood Creek Drive. Councilmember Brent Pulli collected H C S O activity data over a twelve-month period in two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three. H C S O reported two accidents and issued an average of one-point-two speeding citations every four-hour day session over the thirty-nine days that they conducted their business here in the city. They found speeds between thirty-three and forty-one that they ticketed for. They also issued sixty-one warnings for speeds below thirty-three to thirty-four, usually in the height in the thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two neighborhood, or one and a half per day. With the average traffic flow between four hundred and six hundred vehicles per day, that means only one-half to one percent of both cars were speeding. City manager rules reports on Barney and Fred over the last, over several months in two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four showed similar speeding percentages. And the average speeds are between twenty and twenty-three miles an hour below the speed limit and point one up to a maximum three percent of vehicles went above thirty-five. Speeding above forty miles an hour was vanishingly rare. Implementing the five-speed cushions is a large unbudgeted addition to the city's budget for two thousand twenty-four to twenty-five, likely between fifty and sixty thousand dollars. If you look at page ninety-nine in the packet, Freeland Turk estimates the cost of implementing speed cushions at fifty thousand for the five sites. They do not include signage required to alert motorists that there's a road hump ahead, which would raise the total estimated cost to about sixty thousand for those five sites. There are better ways to enhance pedestrian safety, which I assume is the primary playing goal for this traffic calming solution. As I showed, the city of Wood Creek does not have a vehicle safety problem. We only see two to three accidents per year. Nearly all these crashes are minor. We don't have a speeding problem, just a few isolated cases. And across at least the past twenty years, no incident has involved pedestrians in Wood Creek. To be sure, the residents of our city do walk our streets. We exercise, we walk our dogs and our children, we visit neighbors, we increasingly walk or bike to our newly improved parks. Thank you very much for those. The majority of Wood Creek's residential roads see only occasional vehicular traffic and motorists slow and swerve to avoid pedestrians or cyclists when they pass. The two streets with higher traffic levels, Wood Creek Drive and Brook Hollow, need better ways to integrate pedestrians, cyclists, and motorists. Absolutely, these two streets would be well-served with either a pedestrian bike path that's dedicated for their use or a sidewalk. As Freeland Turk said to the city council a few months ago, electronic speed reporting devices like Barney and Fred, which you're getting more of, and H C S O surveillance and ticketing are much less expensive than speed cushions and are far more effective to remind motorists to reduce speed in the city and deter the very small handful of aggressive motorists. To sum up, I urge the city council to find solutions to integrate pedestrian and motor traffic and not spend more than fifty thousand dollars needlessly on speed cushions. The I N M panel can propose solutions if we understand the goal. Thank you.
Um, so Marie's time was.
Yeah.
Monica, Franco.
Nice. Um, I'm speaking to item number eight, two, the engineering report, and I'm speaking in support of the speed pumps. Um, stand back here. Actually, you can sit down.
Okay. I gotta go.
Okay. Um, when we moved here to our present, moved to our present home in nineteen ninety-eight, there were two speed bumps. Um, well, then this is what I remember. There were two speed bumps on Wood Creek Drive and two more on Augusta Drive. Um, there could have been more throughout the city, but that's what I remember. At that time, there were fewer residents living in Wood Creek and the surrounding area. The Roca Lane was a golf course maintenance trail opened only in emergencies. There was no bypass and Wood Creek was not suited, um, was not situated between Blue Hole Primary and Jacob's Well Schools. So obviously, there was a lot less traffic. But even then, the city was aware of the need for traffic calm. Speed is dangerous to pedestrians. Five percent of people die hit when hit by cars going twenty miles an hour. Forty-five percent of people die when hit by a, a car going thirty miles an hour. And eighty-five percent of people die when hit by a car going forty miles an hour. Now, I realize the gentleman before me, he went through the traffic data, but that's only when that sign is out there watching people. I mean, if you sit in my front room and any afternoon, you, you will, you will see people going forty miles an hour down my street. And I try not to look now because it makes me mad. Often, when I drive from my home on Augusta Drive to, to the Wood Creek entrance, I see many folks walking. Some in pairs, some with dogs, some with strollers, and some with dogs and strollers, and some on bicycles. Someone riding a bicycle in front of a child riding a bicycle. I see both young and old folks enjoying the opportunities to be outdoors and exercise. It is my understanding that our government's first priority is to protect its citizens' safety. I support our city councils adding speed cushions to the roads. Speed cushions will not only protect fellow neighbors who walk, speed cushions will also serve to discourage cut-through traffic. The non-resident motorists who use our streets do, uh, to cut through do not pay one dime toward the maintenance of Wood Creek's roads. So I support it and thank you for your time.
Do the three minutes?
That was part of it.
Well done. Gloria Wannit.
Yes, thank you. Um, I wanted to speak to the issue of the form of the agenda as one of my items tonight. What I was wondering and just suggesting to council is that the reports from the officers and the council liaisons and staff and such, is it possible that you could consider moving those items to the end of the meeting instead of at the beginning of the meeting? From strictly the concept of citizen fatigue and listening endlessly sometimes to very long reports in, in the interest of time, if that could be moved to the end of the agenda so that those that are in attendance, as few or as many, would have the time, you know, to get into the regular agenda. So that was just a thought that I've had in several meetings this year and wanted to bring that suggestion and idea to the council. As for item eight, I would like to address, if item eight, I will not take my few minutes here to go into the details. That item, I do oppose having those speed calming devices because of mostly what Mr. Thomas did explain and discuss. The cost is very expensive. We're a very small city with a small budget. And I do pay attention to the issue of our advisors. We pay a lot of money for professionals and we paid a lot of money during my administration and previous to studying this issue to buy the radar equipment, which was, some believed it was true, some did not. But at any rate, the advisors have not suggested in any way that our city needs to have this particular enhancement for speed calming. Then I'd also like to speak, if I have, do I have time here? About thirty seconds. I'm sorry, thirty seconds. Okay, I would like to speak to the issue of the item nine and would really suggest that that item be postponed for discussion this evening. I do believe that we have, the city has information. We know the locations of our right-of-way. If you would just talk to previous professionals, you can get that information without redoing it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So thank you for your comments, everyone. Uh, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Mayor, mayor.
Yes.
I move to remove item three from the consent agenda.
Second.
Mayor, what? I move to approve items one, two, and four of the consent agenda.
Second.
Move on to councilmember Lawrence, second to Mayor Portem, to pass one to the shore, all in favor. Please raise your hands. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, T N Z, he is on the floor.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you.
Just in the package, we've got some updated stuff just from the Fourth of July celebration we had, just the extension of that. We got updated today. There's any questions on that?
We've got. There'll probably be more, a couple more little things to trickle in. So we'll have a final report, what, flat in two weeks?
Yeah. And we do have, uh, we've received three thousand more donations. We're still waiting on the other two, uh, two thousand, which we're in contact with and should have that soon. Uh, the sheriff's report that's in the packet, just the stats. Um, just to give an update on our street signs, we got a couple of locations where we're missing signs altogether, sometimes in two days. Those have been ordered and hopefully be here the next several days, maybe done next week. And then we'll schedule to get those put up. Um, also driving around looking at what we need, we've got a lot of signs that are old, probably could be replaced. And I do know that, uh, there's been some past motions for some signs work and I'm researching some of that and I'll have some other information later on, but we will at least have all the missing signs up shortly. Code enforcement, is there any questions?
No, thank you.
Code enforcement, we just had one letter, it's an out presentation, uh, in July, had a phone conversation with that person working on it. I'm also working with Cynthia at the attorney office on some of the abandoned house or rundown house type issues that we've got to work on some stuff and change up our letters and we're working on that. Uh, the check registers in the, in the packet. Um, the quarterly financials that need to be given, Lene and I and Mike, we're all still working on Funview. You know, it's not up to date. There's things that we've got to address, that's what, what Lene has helped and then Mike worked, downloaded that in, Mike probably got access to Funview last week. So it'll be a process, but we'll get there. And then we can provide you accurate stuff. Um, just some, uh, updates, uh, that's going on in City Hall. We're replacing our handrails later this week. It was supposed to start Monday, but some of the brackets that we're using, they were special ordering, not in, but hopefully in the next several days, the front handrail will be replaced, the back handrail, partially replaced and repaired. They'll be made out of treated lumber, so they'll need to be cured before we can stain them, but, but we can have some safe, nice handrails appear decent. On July twelfth, we took a lightning strike or one nearby and messed up all kinds of good stuff. It affected our electrical system, our computer systems, our internet, our cameras, our refrigerators, our A C system, and our phones. So we're in the process of, we've got most everything fixed, some of the computer issues, Casey's still got some loose ends to tie up, but he was on, Johnny on the spot, got us working. Um, and so he's been working through that. And, uh, you know, once we have all of the information on that, what it costs, we've already talked to the T M L risk guys. They know it's coming. Um, I met with him personally, came by a couple of weeks ago. And so we'll definitely probably be able to file a claim on all that stuff. Coupled with that, to make this storm, uh, the roof and all that kind of stuff. Uh, we will file a claim, I'll talk to you about that too, but we had to update our property. We didn't have playground equipment, the gazebo, the stuff at Augusta Park. Uh, we didn't have that on our coverage. It's, um, the question would be added, it added when the underwriters work through it, but, uh, they know that's covered too, that insurance requirement. And also today, my final items, got confirmation, we'll finalize some paperwork tomorrow, Monday. We're gonna get, we have two high school students that are coming, they're gonna work through the high school and the practical department to help with us up here. Uh, City Hall, a lot of different stuff, you know, the scanning project that we need to get done, uh, doing some, just whatever we need done, really. So we got a couple of good, uh, outstanding, um, in-the-work bunnies and Wednesdays, Wednesdays for three hours a day. And, um, the teacher, the practical teacher, uh, very highly of them. And then my wife, we were just retired from the school, she knows the two kids sitting there, a lot of the best kids in school. So we'll have some help in some of our projects, time the projects done. That's it.
Got anything on engineering requests?
Oh, the engineer request, yeah, I'm sorry, listen. Um, we've requested Tom Freeland Turk to do an A D A assessment of our three parks. Uh, just to see what, I know, we all know something needs to be done, and so they're just gonna, they're gonna do an assessment, see if that will need.
They'll, they'll be out, uh, next week.
Okay.
So should ask you for my, um, uh.
Okay, perfect. And then also, I've asked them to take a look at Champions Court Road, the little short road. Way back up there, before you get to Chris's house. Um, we had a resident let us know that she called, had called ambulance for her husband. And it's a real short street, four houses, and it's got two tree out there. It's real tight and you can't, you couldn't turn around. So as a safety issue, just ask Tom to do an assessment and see if, if we're lacking or deficit in anything or good or whatever. So just to make sure from a safety perspective, um, if anything needs to be done. And then get from there.
Good, love you very much. Are there any questions to the?
I just have a little clarification on that lightning.
Yeah.
Was, is that covered?
Yes.
Is that uncovered?
Yes.
But you're operational now.
Yeah, we're operational, working, we've got some tweaking to do, we've got some other old backup stuff that we've gotta get through. But we're working, it was hot stop, it was pretty.
Okay.
And then we'll, we've, not everything, the cameras are gonna get fixed, they're all getting, we're not fully functioning there yet, but we will be shortly, so. But, uh, and then, once it's all said and done, you can report an update on the cost and insurance.
What's the deductible on our insurance?
Um, you know, I, I asked him that, I don't, I don't have a nuts economy. It's pretty standard, comparable to.
I didn't know how the municipal.
Right.
Works very.
Yes, it is a little bit different, but, um, it's, you know, it's similar.
Well, obviously, it hasn't mattered.
Right. So, okay, but we did, as far as the, make this storm, we've got the roof. The only damage, I don't know, was our roof here and then the roof at the gazebo. Everything else, so that should count, so. But I was just waiting to file a claim, also get our, like, gazebo wasn't on there, but he assured me that it's covered. It's just, we're just kinda waiting for it to be there and get, get done.
Thank you, sir. Um, item seven, Mayor Portem, I, did you refer the?
Yeah, I'm, I'm having to read this memory and if you all, hopefully you all read it. Essentially, uh, council sent two directives to our advisory boards in a previous meeting for them to give input, given that the O R C does not intend to meet this summer for many months as several of their members are on vacation out of town. Um, their chairperson sent a memo, a memory, and this, you know, for the time being. So, uh, no, it's not exactly what council asked for, but I did not feel it was up to me to censor the kind of thing and given that it is the report that council requested, more or less. But anyway, it's, uh, this one specifically about the comp plan, um, and input on, on that review process.
Does he know that we, you know, got a pretty hefty budget, um, proposed or got planned?
Um, I don't know that I conveyed that specifically in my email.
I didn't think about it when we were talking about sign.
But I, yeah, I, I do feel like he's aware of the desire to update, so. Anyway, I bet that.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I was looking at the, the regular, we'll go ahead and start with the minutes from, um, was it the twenty-fourth of July? Go ahead.
I move to approve city council meeting minutes from July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-fourth with the following edit, which is to remove the wording "as amended" from the main motions of item eight, nine, and ten.
Good.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Um, this is a new element added to our meeting minutes. Um, the reason I suggest that this wording has of "as amended" be removed from the language that lays out the main motion made by a council member is one, the council member never actually included these words in their motion, but stating them in the minutes this way makes it appear as though they did say "as amended," "as amended" as part of their motion. And two, saying "as amended" as part of the main motion suggests that something has been amended before the main motion was given, which isn't the case. Um, this language appears to be foreshadowing what will happen, though it has not actually happened yet. Um, nothing in the amended, nothing had actually been amended until the vote at the end of the item. Possibly if council wishing to document in their meeting minutes, the main motion was voted on "as amended." The place I see this language is as part of the recording of votes on the main motion. Example, Mayor Roscoe called for a vote by a show of hands on the main motion "as amended." Now, meeting minutes are substantial and this new added language in our minutes disrupts the substantial listing of actions and votes of councils' meetings.
All right, so the motion is to approve the July twenty-fourth, uh, meeting minutes with the edits, taking out "as amended" on items eight, nine, and. Any discussion? All right, well, what, what were eight, nine, and ten again, Mr. Grummer?
The regular agenda.
And the items specifically, just two, three work for each, one and what were they?
So there's the main motion being stated and then the words "as amended" was part of the main motion.
Right.
And I'm just moving the "as amended" part because nothing's been amended yet.
So what I was asking though is what was the subject of eight, subject of nine, subject of ten? The meeting minutes are, what's your budget, any budget?
Uh, they, it is discuss and take possible action on two-way communication of council, divided reports in council. Discussion to take appropriate action is like the municipal administrative consultant and director of mayor staff to enter, intern agreement. Discuss and take a pos, appropriate action on updating the comp plan, including but not limited to the creation of a survey and updating demographic section when the most recent census, uh. Page twenty and twenty-one.
Any further discussion? Please show your vote by, show hands, say ah. Those adjustments and brings that I focused.
Um, if I'm in here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with the most, city attorney, may I ask you a question? Is there any legal reason that would prevent council from approving minutes with edits and not needing to come back? Could we just approve the edits as part of the approval of the minutes?
I have seen that, yes.
So my motion do ask for them to come back.
Yeah, I just say, just, um, yeah, I mean, at some point, I've got to sign the, I've got to sign the minutes, so amend them. And if nothing else, bring it back for signature rather than bring it back for approval.
Yeah.
Then that's fine. If everyone agrees, is there an objection?
Yes.
All right, moving to the, um, I don't remember, I would, uh, because, because item number nine is kind of associated with the report from Freeland, so I, I'd like to take up item number nine before we go to eight, if that's okay?
I'd like to get the report first.
Well, the.
This is just.
What is, number nine is making recommendations that sort of preempt what there's, so if, if we agree with what they're saying, then they need to have that in the report, because if they have something else, because they do have something else in the report, you know, then, then we have to go through the report and then go back and, and adjust. So if we, if we can discuss item nine first, then it can either, it can be melded into their work or, or not. So anyway, so I'd like to, uh, recognize, uh, council member David.
Okay, um. So my explanation here is for that.
Pretty good one.
Okay, um. I move that we discuss and take appropriate action to request city staff to create an RFP for a survey along Brook Hall Drive. To determine the exact location of the city's right of way.
I'll say it.
Uh, okay, before our recent engineering suggestions regarding placement of crosswalk are implemented. Um, I believe the land survey should be conducted along Brook Hall to determine, um. Uh, determine if all of Brook Hall is centered on the right way. Land survey will include location utilities, topography, uh, land elevation information, and confirmation of the easement or approachments. It should be carefully reviewed, minimize the impact to homeowners, trees, utilities, along the path of the closed walkways. If alternate routes are available. So I had looked at our recent engineering, uh, study. We hadn't talked about a crosswalk, three crosswalks at that particular location. So, um, I had made a motion last year to put a crosswalk up in a different location, higher up on, um. At corner of Jack Miller and Brook Hall, and that was passed, but we haven't given the action on that. My concern with these three crosswalks is that they direct pedestrians to walk on the side of Brook Hall that has the narrowest distance to the road. And I have heard from members, uh, who are on previous road committees, particularly of one that formed the Brook Hall Road. That Brook Hall is not centered on the easement. When, uh, Freeland Turk recently told us, uh, it was announced, good news. Deerfield is centered on the right of way, you know, but Deerfield is a nice straight, straight street. And so it's logical that it would be right in the middle of the right way, so you can measure, uh, twenty-five feet each direction. Brook Hall, um, anecdotally, I heard that there are places where the street is right on the right way, on the edge of it. So what I'm just suggesting, before, before we implement something like these three crosswalks. Which pretty much direct pedestrians right across the street. The one house at the intersection of Brook Hall and Jack Miller, they recently paid almost seven hundred thousand for that. If we put crosswalk in front of their house, it will leave them fifteen feet or five doors. And whereas the opposite side has a great deal more space. So, um, what I have in these suggested routes was that instead of, let me choose suggesting, before we had the stop sign. Up, um, at the other side of Jack Miller, Brook Hall. And we have a good walkway space along Brook Hall on the, I guess it would be the northeast side. Whereas if we put the walkway on the opposite side, we are going to be crossing into a lot of private properties, that's what my little arrows are doing, traffic, foot traffic, both in and out. So, before we determine where we're gonna direct, direct on with traffic. We really should take consideration of how much we're, if we possibly not disrupt a person's front yard. I think we should do that, plus the, um, the southwest side. There are a lot of utilities and a lot of trees up here in County, it would be preferable to put it on the opposite side, but that. So, what I'm asking is if you want, you put, uh, crosswalks there, that kind of designate where people walk. Let's consider if we need them there, or we'd like them somewhere else better.
Grummer?
Thank you.
Um, city engineer?
Tom. Great, I'm gonna ask you a few very simple questions. Um, when council gets to the point where we would ask you to draft an engineering plan for walking trails? And the locations in the city, will you be considering the locations of the road and the city easements as part of the research and developing the plan for the city?
Absolutely.
Okay. And where do you source your information at city engineers regarding lotlines and road placement and roadway easements?
So, um, in, in a planning phase of the work. Uh, we would typically reference the Hayes County appraisal district, uh, GIS system, where they have all the existing right of way and lotlines. Um, it's a good source of information, um, and the information is useful. But sometimes the, the lines and the lotlines are not correct, so you have to be careful about using that information when you, uh, when the design evolves. Good example is Deerfield, the east-west lane. We noticed on appraisal district maps that the existing road was very close to the property line, so as, as part of our work, we went out and surveyed that line in. Uh, and what we learned that was that the, the road was in the right of way and was far enough away from the existing right of way line that we had roots to work. But I, I don't believe it was in the center. Um, I think the, the north-south leg is more or less in the center. So, I think that answers your question.
Um, so currently, in the plan that we have not yet seen, but we've seen on, you know, in the packet, um, we're talking about putting stripes on the road for the crosswalk.
Right.
Does that affect? I don't understand how easements apply, like, you don't need to know where the easement is in order to strike the actual road, correct?
No, we're, we're using the, the physical road, uh, to, uh, not only align the striking, but to describe the limits.
Thank you. Um, I see this possible expenditure of twenty thousand dollars, um, for the study regarding easements in the city to be premature this time. In that council has not yet decided where the walking trails might be in the city, nor have we drafted a plan placed in front of us. In which allow the citizens to come forward and start speaking, and which may adjust the plans for where we're putting walking trails. Um, there appears to be a assumption that walking trails are going to be placed on Brook Hall, and yet I do not remember council ever deciding that yet. Um, it has been part of the discussion, but I don't remember council specifically making a decision. Um, but somebody else could refresh my memory on this, but I do remember that we asked the, um, INM panel to make us a recommendation on locations for walking trails. Maybe the, the city would consider, but council hasn't actually decided on those locations yet. And I think council should first see what INM are interested in recommending to council, and then council makes kind of a decision on their recommendation, and then we move forward with that plan. Um, I also, as the city engineer mentioned, these maps already exist, so I'm not sure at this point we need to spend twenty thousand dollars.
No, that's not his, he said.
At the Hayes.
For planning, he uses the Hayes County appraisal district, but that is a rough sketch and can be used for, uh, more.
Detail.
Yeah.
So my point with this is I realize, if we've been in this whole package, these crosswalks are a part of it. And if you put a crosswalk in a location, people are going to assume that you're telling them to cross there and walk on that side of the street. Um, and I'd like to know if that's correct, if there is plenty of easement to do that. Or if putting those crosswalks in different locations would be less disruptive of person property, of front yards.
I think if we're unsure about where the crosswalks should be, then we can just keep them up for now. Maybe we can leave them in the contract, and we could tell the contractor, don't build them until we say so, or, or we can just take them up. Um, I, I think the location of the crosswalks that are in the plan. Uh, was, kind of came out of a discussion between Kevin and I, and I think he was, uh, trying to read it, his sentiment of the council and all the committees. He may have gotten that wrong, I, I don't know, but, uh, but that's how the placement of the crosswalks came to be. Um, and I didn't have the benefit of, you know, what the thoughts were on Brook Hall and where the sidewalks might go.
Specifically to the point of this item, you all conduct plans or raise, correct? So we would not actually need to move forward with this item in the capacity in which it's stated, because you all picked up on this, right?
That's correct.
Yes, so I agree with the concept of surveying Brook Hall for the point of adding pedestrian safety. Meaning a walking trail, or road striping, or whatever comes of that study in that plan. I do feel like that is a separate item, and I don't believe Brook Hall would be the only street movement we'd be looking at. So I would prefer to see that bundled in a bigger package addressing pedestrian mobility, domain focal points in the city. Parks being a key one, also specifically on our most dangerous roads, right? If you're talking about where we're having the accidents that are reported to tech that, um, Wood Creek Drive and Brook Hall came, right? Um, and this intersection in particular, crosswalks, all they're intended to do is give a designated space for crossing the street, they don't tell people where to walk afterwards. And there are rules governing where pedestrians are supposed to walk in relation to traffic. Um, now, obviously, people do whatever they want, right? The purpose of crosswalks in this intersection is because it's an intersection that we have collectively identified as possibly problematic. It pained as the most desired walkability area for our city whenever we did our land forum thing. So that's why it's being focused on a little bit more here. Um, crosswalks were a bit of a compromise because some people felt the south sides were too aggressive. And then once crosswalks got brought up, it was sort of like, yes, let's, let's do all the things, especially the ones that aren't super expensive, which road striping is typically the cheapest, right? Um, I understand the idea of people's personal property, but again, we're not telling people where to walk. We're just saying, this is the appropriate place to cross the street here, where traffic can see you, where vehicles are being stopped. Um, and so that's the point of those, and then with them come those pedestrian crossing signs that lead and trigger people coming into this intersection. So to me, I, I don't believe this item should move forward tonight. I, um, part of the other reason why I wanted to get your report first is because I do believe that we are, uh, our goal is to listen to the experts on this one. And what you, the plan you recommended to me does seem to be the safest, least complicated intersection of options presented tonight. So I would like to move forward with that plan if we keep the crosswalk, that can be a separate discussion then, but, um, I don't support this item because of the reasons I, that I think you all could do our survey. And I believe it should be bundled with the walking pedestrian mobility package, maybe we'll go with that.
Mayor, Mayor, may I?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
So, um, uh, I've been hearing bits and pieces of discussion over the, over the past three or four months about your desire for pedestrian facilities. Um, obviously, there are some pretty significant challenges with that. Um, you know, it's, I can put a lot of thought into how this all might go. Um, you know, I, I think you, I think you need kind of a, a master planning effort to, uh, put some thought into where you might want these facilities. Obviously, some of these facilities are gonna go along your roads, some of them may go along the dog course, some of them may go on, but I, I think you, you start at thirty thousand feet and kind of look at the city whole list. Um, when you drill down to building these facilities along your right of ways. I think the most practical approach is going to be, for lack of a better term, meandering, uh, when it's related to where the right of way is. If you ask me, how do you align the pedestrian facilities, where do you put them? Given your conditions here, I would say, you know, I'm looking at trees, driveways, landscaping, and where I can and cannot work within your right of way. And I think your pedestrian facilities are gonna, are gonna do this when prepared to the right of it. I don't, I don't think you're gonna have sidewalks strictly along the right of way, inside the right of way, or strictly along the right of way, outside the right of way. They're gonna meander, and you're gonna want that because everybody's got nice trees. Our hydrants, they've got planter box and that, like, you know, these are all things that, you know, you're not gonna wanna just plow over and put these sidewalks in. So, the right of way line is important, obviously, and any easements that might exist are important. But I think the alignment's gonna be, be based on physical feature and, and not necessarily the right of way or, or easement. So I think, I think surveying the right of way is a little premature. I think what you really need to start things off is, I think somebody mentioned, we just need to do some research and find out what easements are there. And, and that can be done, uh, cheaper than the, the, the scope that you're talking about. I mean, you're talking about locating the right of way, topograph, utilities, these are all things that we do for design. And that's expensive, and, and we're not ready to do that. Um, I, I would hate to do all that work and not, and then not do it, so, but I think it's a little premature.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What would you call that? Because I think we've been using land surveys, for lack of a better term, to talk about that initial phase, understanding that, like, the, the more expensive land survey that does a tree here of this certain circumference, you know? I don't, how do we talk about that first phase? What do we call that?
Uh, the, the first phase would, would just be, uh, 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 basically a, a right of way and easement map.
Okay.
Based on research, I, I pull flats, I pull deeds, uh, and we, we kind of put together uh, a puzzle, so to speak, of what all that looks like. It's not really, really, really accurate, but it's good enough for us to use and plan, and good enough for us to identify where problem areas might be. Uh, for example, you know, this intersection, the, the right of lines, right of way lines don't match up with the road very well. You know, it'll be known to ourselves, we, we need to look at that when we get into design. We don't need to solve that problem, right? So, so it's, it's kind of a right of way easement math, it's a puzzle, basically, if you put together.
And I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about this, and I, I live on Brook Hall, I live further up the street, and the, the, the car traffic versus the pedestrian traffic. Somebody said already, people are gonna walk where they're gonna walk. There, you, you can, can't tell if you're gonna walk on this side and take advantage of this crosswalk over here. Um, I don't know that those crosswalks are going to, um, really benefit, especially for the cost of these particular things. Um, the, the citizens of, of Wood Creek, they, they know enough to be safe when they're walking across the street as it is. And even if that's twenty-five miles an hour, um, they're pretty well seen. I had lived in quote-unquote the big city before, where crosswalks really have to be there, and compared to here. Where you get out in a crosswalk, and if you, if you're in the crosswalk, the cars are gonna stop, um, because otherwise they're gonna ride you over. Um, and I did that for years in, in a particular town, and, uh, several million people. And, uh, when that happens, yeah, that's, we absolutely need crosswalks for that, but I believe that in this city, crosswalks are overkill. Were you in state, Ms. Bailey?
Oh, just in the, uh, council member hindsight, well, we can't tell people where to walk, but my concern was, and I like to take a desperate, let's just don't. But my concern was, and I like to take it just from, let's just don't put the crosswalk markings just yet. Um, because if maybe there'll be the rebels that'll walk diagonally, but a lot of people will see that crosswalk and then walk straight across and where they're trying to go, they're trying to go to Jack, uh, Jack Miller and then down to Dulittle because that's an awesome place to walk. So that's where the traffic's going. But what this will interest them, who walk right in front of these people's house and there's a circular driveway, random landscaping, I mean, it'd be awful for those people. And so maybe just don't put those physically right now.
As I said, we can, we can leave it in the contract and, and control when the contractor does it, or even if he does it at all, we can change the order now. Or we can just check it out now and put it back in later, whatever you guys want to do.
If I said the, the motion is actually, we're talking about doing a survey, um, not placing crosswalks, was that, so?
But my purpose was to try to find out before we walk in people's yards.
Sure.
But I, I can withdraw the motion and say, maybe that's not.
No, we'll vote on the motion.
There you go.
Mayor?
But.
Um, yes, Tom.
Um, going back to conversations that I had with Kevin months and months ago, but was there not an effort with your previous engineer to come up with a, a tiny wide pedestrian plan? No, I thought there was some kind of effort, but it, it didn't.
It was, it didn't come, come from.
It's that in our budget, we put money to it, nothing ever happened. Um, specifically, we wanted to do the idea of the row and easement map. Um, just to get it started because what we've consistently run up against is where would we put them if we put them, right? And then the conversation always goes to not my yard, right? Versus a lot of the people on Wood Creek Drive are actually like, yes, please my yard. People walk in my yard every day, multiple times a day, um, to and from the swimming hole. And frankly, I welcome them because they won't be hit in my yard. So, um, I, I, I don't understand that logic, but uh when it comes to pedestrian mobility, we're not even set that building and walking path somewhere else is even the right plan for us. We've also been talking about or considering striping on the roads to give more designated space versus pushing people into the sides of the roads. Because we do realize that that could be difficult to convince everybody on a road to buy into the need, right? Because people have invested money into landscaping and easement without realizing it. And I think one of the biggest discussion points moving forward for all of Wood Creek residents and all of us, one of the things we can work on is helping everybody in this city understand that they don't actually own that front five, ten feet likely, that it is likely a road easement because the road easements are fifty feet. So even if the road is not centered, that's still fifty feet coming from somewhere. And the roads themselves are, I mean, I don't know what the average is, but we'll say twenty-two, twenty-five feet, right, or?
Something like that, yeah, so the common term for that area between the edge of pavement and somebody's right away or part along is the parkway.
Yeah. So I think a lot of people have gotten emotionally attached to their parkway. And they don't realize they don't own it and they, they've never actually.
They own it, they take care of it.
Right.
Just, just a matter of, of principle, I don't know the words. Easement means that you, you own it, but the city has the right to use it, as far as I know. We, I own my easement, but I can't tell them that they can't, I, I can't tell the city that you can't use it, it is my property.
The city can improve, dig, remove, whatever they want at any point in time without any discussion, vote, any. And in fact, in some cities, that you're actually by state law required to put in a sidewalk and maintain it for the city. So that is something that, I mean, we've never exercised that, but that is written into state law that we can actually require everyone to put in pedestrian mobility in their front yards and, and not necessarily paper. So just, just so people understand what we're discussing and the, and the perceived rights here, you know, and, and ownership. And I'm not saying that's right or what we should do, I'm just saying that I think these conversations should center around the concept of.
Well, let's, let's get to the big conversation, let's take a vote, let's go and vote on this motion and then, and then we can hear more from Mr. Sher. So, um, so the, the motion is to to request that we staff that we're RFP for a survey along Brooklyn Drive to determine the exact location of the city's right away. Um, so all in favor, please say aye. Right hand, opposed, nay.
Nay.
All right, so we must fail, we'll move on to, um, the vulnerable votes.
I'm sorry, she is getting abstained. Did you abstain, ma'am? I couldn't hear you.
I just abstained, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't hear you say abstained, okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, I'm sorry, legal reasoning for abstention? Do you have a legal reasoning for your abstention or is it a no vote for abstention?
Let's just say it's no.
So was that recorded differently? Is it recorded as an A or does it say an abstain?
So I thought his abstention goes with the majority vote, no?
It's, remember, we've, we've been through these TML things and we were like, it's an A, it's an A. But then when it was being recorded, it was being, still being recorded as an abstaining. And so then we had to figure out if a motion passed or not, do you remember that?
Yeah.
And so then it was like, okay, it goes with nay unless you have a legal reason, is what she was saying.
Yeah, under, under chapter one seventy-one or one seventy-six, if you've got that legal abstention and you filed that with the city's executive committee, that's what I was asking.
So we will go to, uh, item number eight, which is the, um, the question about the action to accept the twenty-point-four safety enhancement program as prepared by Freeland Turk. And let's the bid package, remember, Dan Hines.
I move to approve the twenty-twenty-four safety enhancement program as prepared by Freeland Turk and direct south to post the bid package as soon as possible.
Do I speak to that or does, or does Mr. Sher?
So, I need to say that too, so.
Can he introduce, yeah.
Okay, um, so in the past couple of months, we've been wanting to put this program together. Uh, it's kind of a hot pot of things the city wanted to do. Um, so it includes, um, the speed cushions. Uh, it includes, uh, installing asphalt between the edge of pavement of the new overlay in some driveways. Uh, includes the level up and overlay of the east-west leg of Deerfield. Includes the guardrail modification down there on Brooklyn by the park to create a couple of new parking spaces. It include, includes the repair and installation of some miscellaneous signs that are all piled up over here somewhere. I'm sure I'm missing something.
Those radar signs.
I'm sorry?
The radar signs to.
Yes, yes, we're gonna install radar signs that are initiated there. Uh, that's generally the package, uh, um, it's, uh, ready to bid. We can, if you instruct us, we can probably get that posted on City Council in the next couple of weeks. We gotta, we have to work out advertising dates with your newspaper, we gotta make sure all that syncs. Uh, so that usually takes a week or two. Uh, and, uh, the bidding, uh, the, the bidding duration is typically on bottom month, like giving contractors a box, at least three or four weeks to put the bids together. So theoretically, we, we could probably get it posted by the end of this month. Taking bids into September or October, coming to you in October with, uh, a recommendation for awarding. Um, so we'd be starting November, December-ish for construction.
Let's priority, where would you start first?
Um, since we really didn't get any, um, constraints from the city about what you wanted done first or last, we like to just let the contractor decide that because the, the more, the less constraints you give a contractor, the better the prices you get, so we, we've left that hands off. If you have preferences about what you want done first, now is the time to tell us.
I think, I mean, I think there's a lot of call for dirt build to, you know, get cleaned up, you know, there, there, but there's, I mean, all like. And, and the thing is, is like. This could be, this could be sort of like when we brought in the contractor for the, for the paving of, it's just like, okay, well, this could go on for weeks or months and have done a couple of this, you know, so. And so, you know, it's like, when they, if it's the right contract, they just throw out, okay, you're doing this over here, you're doing this over here and then, and then we're done, pay us. Yeah, so.
Which section on this cost breakdown, which parts are Deerfield?
That is out of order in the packet and I apologize for not catching that. Um, that is like not, that supplement is not, you know what page she's talking about? It's page ninety-nine, it's a cost breakdown for.
Yeah, it's almost two hundred and ninety-eight thousand.
Yeah.
Which part is Deerfield? Because I was allocating that to roadways and it came up with an outrage, it's not.
Let me see.
Sorry, I didn't get those submitted in the right order, so into the.
Also, this is just to clarify, Tom, this is just what, what you estimate would be, this is, I mean, the bid could come in.
We're hoping to come.
Over this or under, well, and in fact, when we did the bond, when we did the road to the bond, again, on a million dollars system, we.
Yeah, this, this is an opinion of cost. We, we can't tell you exactly what this is to our cost, so it's, it's an opinion.
But it's not like, it's not like the contract, this is going out of the bid package I hear, yeah? Here's the numbers we're looking for.
No, no, we, 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 we may give them an est, uh, the copy of the estimate if you so choose. They, they like to ask for that, sometimes we give it, sometimes we don't, based on the kind of. But the, the answer to your question, man, is the cost for the, the overlay of Deerfield really is spread out over.
It's the thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, but it's, it's primarily thirty-five thousand in, um, hot mix asphalt, I think. That's where most of that cost is.
And then they're removing the paint.
That's the items thirty-seventy-six. The hot mix.
Yes.
Those go to twelve thousand and thirty-five thousand?
The twelve thousand is the driveway.
Okay, the twelve thousand is the driveway, what else is the driveways?
Uh, you have removing of base.
Okay, the forty thousand.
Uh, I think we have a little bit of base material, that two forty-seven.
And Tom, sorry to interrupt, but some of this is coming from the bond money. And so that will be priced out differently.
Only direct, yeah.
The driveways actually.
Yes, so when we take the bids and we, um, um, we get the contractor's schedule values, we'll sit down with you and make sure that we have items that pair up with what you're funding from the bond. So there's an explicit number that you can bear up. Uh, so, so that's something we'll, we'll take care of when we fit into construction.
Okay, but still, um, because I didn't realize Deerfield was in this. Because I estimated costs on Deerfield, it closed at a hundred and fifty thousand.
It was, I said it was eighty-five.
Eight, okay.
That was a concept cost, now we have a part cut, so preparing right away is part of that, mobilization's part of that, uh, barricade signs and traffic handling is part of that, um.
Well, here's what I compiled, um, because I thought you were putting all this into driveways. And so the thirty-nine-six-hundred, the twelve thousand, the thirty-five thousand?
The thirty-five thousand is the overlay.
That's an overlay, okay.
Twelve thousand is not, that's driveway.
Okay, and what is the blade up thirty thousand?
The, uh, uh, the, uh, um. The level up, that's correct, that's part of the overlay.
That's part of the overlay?
Yes.
Uh, which is Deerfield?
Correct.
Okay, so.
And there's a proportion of the preparing right away, proportion of the mobilization, um.
Right, because I had seen it as forty-two percent when I added all this, I thought this was all driveways. Um, still, so what does it work out per driveway?
Uh, I, I'd have to do some spreadsheet work to tell you that, I, I, I can't.
Because.
I can't extract that from what I've got. I have to work on.
Construction a lot, and to do a driveway, a full driveway, it's about fifty-five hundred. And your range of per square foot is seven to fifteen dollars per square foot. And if we're tied, if we're paving twelve by twenty, that's three hundred square feet, that's, um, forty-five hundred per small driveway. And this, these numbers work out far higher than what we'd normally hire a contractor.
So the, so the driveways, the, the unit price is going to be higher because you're, you're paving such a small area. So a contractor has to bring all his equipment in, he has to remove asphalt from the small area, he's gonna repair the base in the small area and pave the small area. And then he's gotta move all his equipment and, and do it in, just have a different location. That's different than overlaying, you know, nine hundred feet of, of Deerfield where he starts on one end, he puts down a bunch of asphalt and he goes to the other end, well, you're gonna get a, a better price because it, it takes less effort and mobilization.
I understand that part, but I've given, uh, Jim a list of probably twenty contractors because I was researching it for our road project. There are contractors who do driveways.
Yes.
You know, and that is their job and that's what runs about fifty-five hundred per driveway. What I'm concerned with this whole bid is that, to me, these are a lot of small bids that, um, we're kind of hiring a general contractor to oversee these small portions of bids that the city could actually, you know, let out itself, just say, we need six driveways.
Yes, you could.
And instead of paying what seems like, um, kind of a high fee for our general contractor who's wrapping this and in a way doing the one-hour work for us because cities usually bid out these small, small projects. The sign costs, the installation of fourteen thousand dollars plus eighty-four hundred dollars, fourteen hundred dollars each for signs. Uh, Tech Scott does most of Haines County, uh, sign work. And they are, their techs got approved. And like for stop signs, you can get top quality double-sided stop sign with a pole for two hundred dollars. These, these overall prices just seem to have too much overhead built into them. Where, and I don't really know of a contractor who has all of these qualities. I really think a contractor will look at this and say, I'm gonna bid this out myself and make a tiny profit. So, and he will need to because he's taking on the risk of these individual projects. Um, so I, I'm, I doubt the wisdom of bidding this as one total contract rather than breaking it out and, and doing the individual numbers.
Yes, so to, to your point, um, the, the city can, um, take some of those individual items, go get three quotes from different contractors and pick one and, and have them do the work. Uh, I couldn't agree, you could pay somebody just to do the driveways, I mean, get somebody to just do a sign.
And Aaron Jones, who's, uh, maintenance keeper of Haines County, gave us a list of approved contractors that Haines County uses and, and they can warranty their work.
True, so, yeah, she can do that.
Overall.
So the, uh, the, the downside is, is that, uh, you, you're, the, the city and the staff are basically acting as the general contractor, they're. the general contractor. They're, they're having to get the quotes and they're having to process contracts and they're having to manage that contract during construction. So that's, that's staff, uh, and, you know, they're, they're busy folks.
Back in the olden days when I was city secretary, we did exactly that. We led our own bids, especially in small contracts. So.
The, the, and the way it's put together now is, you know, you will get a general contractor that will do all this work. Uh, there's many, uh, roadway oriented contractors that can do all this work. I, 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 you know, I don't, I don't think there's a lot of specialty work in here that they're, they're working outside of their expertise and they gotta bring in, you know, a specialty subcontractor. Either way, it works.
I think that works in nice.
Um, I believe the goal with bundling all of these items was the economy of scale. And the fact that we have already tried getting bids on our own with our smaller projects and didn't. Um, we went through that before the bond, actually. We were thinking about maybe going to tax a smaller amount, paying out of our pocket. We got one bid skating in, uh, five minutes after the deadline, couldn't accept it. Um, and so that, it's kind of, you know, that dream went out the window with that. So, we even struggle now specifically with our signs for the last three years to do the very thing that you're talking about if we broke this back out. Right now, we even have a land management contract out to seek a professional to help us on a consistent basis on this front. I don't know what our respondents are at this point in time. I don't want to continue to burden staff right now with this work when we can turn this over to people who manage this kind of stuff day in, day out. Because right now, staff is converting to a new website, they're converting to a new financial program that was left in shambles for them to pick up the pieces. Um, we are headed into trying to wrap up budget tax season and Deerfield residents are waiting, 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 waiting. And if we push this off in another way, they're going to be waiting some more. And I just, at this point in time, would like to see the city move forward on the next round of, um, projects that citizens have been advocating for, for years now. Safety, traffic calming, um, you know, obviously the guardrails kind of a toss in there. Um, that was to increase parking at the, the park. But I, I do believe that a contractor would better handle this than having our staff, even though we do have a contractor, I mean, he could speak to the, to this point exactly. And the last thing I want to say is that I specifically feel like we, sorry, I'm losing my train of thought. I, I might have to come back to that, but. Yeah, it's, I'm sorry, I had one more point and I should have written it down.
Um, I actually have a question regarding the speed cushions. Are these the portable ones that council is discussing?
So the speed cushion that we picked, uh, uh, are both within the payment. Are they considered portable or are they considered, they, they can be removed, they can be relocated or shorted?
Yes. Okay. Cause, so when I, you know, Google, which I'm sure is not a good representation of what prices actually are out there, um, the, the ten thousand is much higher than what I was finding on Google, like portable.
Well, you're only seeing the material rubs.
Okay, so that ten is the entire installation material.
Striping.
And that, that is closer to what we estimated. And I don't remember, because Kevin did pull some numbers for us.
We had the bit, we had the. And I remember that.
Yeah.
I really would like to finish, I think it's finished up on my promise, so, um, regarding speed cushions, I talked to Aaron Jones, uh, who's the road maintenance guy for Hayes. Has been for many years. He said that Hayes County no longer uses those rubber speed portable cushions because they're a maintenance nightmare. They pulled up every one of them in Hayes County. They're sitting in their supply yard. They each actually have brand new ones that they will not use because they disintegrate and then they're major cleanup operations. All they use are asphalt, asphalt speed bumps, they use a lot of those.
So we can use asphalt, uh, speed cushions?
I don't know what you can do on Rock Hollow because that's a cement road. I know you wanna put asphalt there. Um, also, we were told that if you go over these speed cushions at twenty-five miles an hour, you won't feel it. But Aaron Jones was there and a couple of constables, they were volunteering at barbecue. They said, you feel it, you need to go over those bumps ten miles an hour. Otherwise you could hit the ceiling.
That's the point.
And they also are, they can be a traffic hazard because people will slow down. People behind them aren't aware of it. So there are issues with the portable.
So.
Cushions.
Uh, I was understanding that the speed cushions that we, or that are in the plans was, was the preference stated by the city.
Well, that's it.
Wha- whatever speed cushions you want up for the plan, you just don't.
That's it.
Then you come back to your thought.
So, uh, so on the, on the suggestion that we may, maybe use the speed cushions the county has, uh, we would have to specify them in plans. If we don't, contractors required to buy new. But if we say to the contractor, we're gonna supply you the speed cushions, here's where they are, go pick them up. That's fine, we just need to put that.
I have some questions about the bid process, I realized. I was, okay, so what you have here, this is an estimate, correct?
Correct.
And this is published, and when companies come in and place bids, they may go over this or they may go under.
Sure.
Correct, right?
Sure.
They also have the option to only bid the things that are in their real files, correct? No, so they'd have to bid, they couldn't say, we don't have the capacity to do these areas. Okay, so we wouldn't be able to, if a company only wanted to bid four.
No, they have to bid everything.
The whole thing, okay. So that will illuminate some smaller people who don't have the capacity to do it all.
Well, sometimes they're brought onto the team as a.
Okay, so.
That's the G E C's garage.
Okay, so right now, we don't really need to worry about deep diving into your estimates because as an industry professional right now, these are pretty solid and people will bid kind of, eh, you know, what is, they're under what they think they can do, correct? Okay, so I'm not worried about that. And then I did have a question on the Hayes County roads thing because this was new to me tonight. So Hayes County is dealing with all county roads, correct? Right, so county roads are typically of a certain kind of speed limit and have a certain amount of traffic on them. So that's not really the kind of traffic and speed limit.
They're very residential as well.
So Hayes County takes care of residential roads. And so they've discussed if I, that's where they pulled these speed box cushions from?
I replace it, they are higher.
And did they talk about the amount of, like, as an industry professional, eh, is there amount of time that we're talking about for degradation on this? Like, is it comparable to asphalt? Are we comparing apples and oranges?
I don't have enough history to accurately, um, answer that question. I, I, in general, asphalt speed cushions are gonna last longer than the portable. Uh, but if you wanna take it out or remove it, asphalt is difficult to work with, so.
So when council talked about this, what, how we got to the temporary ones, was that concern of, you know, this is a trial program. We haven't had speed cushions in a couple decades, right? Maybe almost two.
Almost three.
Really? Cause they were still here when I was in high school driving. So I won't date myself inside. Uh, well, so today, um, so what I'm getting at is we, I, I can't speak for everyone, but I'm fully aware that we might install a speed cushion and in a couple of years realize this one's not working or, you know, um, whatever, you know, we need to pivot, right? Um, I think the reality is, is we don't wanna keep doing nothing though because our citizens are pretty agitated about the, what's going on here despite what our radar signs read in only certain locations, right? So that's how we, that's how we got to these points. So I, I'm not saying we shouldn't peel apart this package or, or make some adjustments. But, you know, we've typically kind of gone with our professional recommendations once they pull a package of this type together. And they are typically working on council decisions leading up to that point. So I don't really wanna try to like rewrite this at this point because we've taken several votes on this topic already. Now, if we wanna compare the merits of like asphalt versus temporary speed cushions, I mean, I just, I don't know that we're, that that's even the conversation for tonight, you know, um.
I'd like to say a couple of things about that. You know, all the, all the discussion about speed cushions or not speed cushions or, you know, crosswalks or not crosswalks. Yeah, I just wanna remind us that, you know, our number one priority is public safety. They're taking care of our citizens, that's our number one. Our, our least priority is, is enabling people to go faster to town. You know, that's, that's what a lot of this stuff is about. And, and we've been talking about it sometime for years. You know, some of this stuff has been on the agenda for years. This proposal, first of all, I think the numbers are high. I think the bids are gonna come in significantly lower than this. And we don't have to accept a bid. You know, if it comes back in and it's inappropriate, we just say, well, that, that didn't go well. But I, I think it's probably gonna turn out something like the, the bond, the road, the, the roads that we did put from the bond and come out better and we will check this box and we will provide for a safer, better city, which is what we're here to do. And so I, I hope that you do the right thing in classes. I have a, I think you have as well. Um, with these speed bumps that we've talked about here, and we've been talking ad nauseam, usually a year and a half make more, make much more than that, but in the last year and a half, more so than before. One of the things that we talked about that we did not get was an engineer report regarding speed bumps because of the possible liability that there may be about placing speed bumps in certain places, either bumps or humps. And if, if somebody's goes crazy and they're, they go too fast and they, they take a, a flyer off that speed bump, who's liable, but based on.
But there's some speeding in that.
You're right, but if there were and that did happen, then there's that liability.
They're liable, they're liable for, they, they, they went too fast.
It's, it's, what I'm really talking about is, is the placement of them and that we didn't get a, a engineer's report. We talked about it being twenty-five thousand dollars to get an engineer's report about placement or where they would go, not whether or not we would get there. We never got an engineer's report, it's hard, I know.
That was part of their report.
Isn't it in the packet?
So, so i- is the, is, are the placements in this packet the ones that you recommended? If they are, I stand corrected.
So, uh, we received from the, the city, um, uh, uh, your, your own study done on where you thought uh, speed cushions go.
Yeah.
We reviewed that report and it had, uh, no objections to the, to the general locations. Okay, uh, and then when we put together this package, we actually went out and, uh, determined the exact location of the speed hub. And the things that we consider when we do that is drainage, uh, we wanna make sure that uh, the speed hub can be, can be seen so that we don't put them in curves and things like that. You know, that's, that's, that's the kind of thing that we looked at. And, and the speed cushions pretty much went where the original city's report wanted them. So, uh, it, so from an engineering perspective, their locations are just fine. Now, uh, you know, liabilities and who's responsible, if somebody hits it at fifty miles an hour and has an accident, I'll let Megan uh, uh, answer that, that's a, that's a, that's a liability deal. But from an engineering perspective, they're just fine.
Okay. The other thing about these would also require a blue signs for each and every speed cushion, which means other additional costs, it's not included in this bid.
So, on, on that subject, uh, each of those speed ups, uh, cushions is, 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 uh, it's gonna be very visible, it's gonna have striping on it.
Yeah.
And so the, the cautionary signs before and after are, um, uh, a preference.
Again, courtesy, so to speak.
You can, uh, you can, you can have them or you can not have them. Uh, we don't, we didn't put them in here. Uh, we can certainly do that if that's what you want.
The other thing is the, uh, the radar signs, it says there's three, we actually have four, I believe. So it should be four radar signs. And the primary cost is digging a hole and, and, and making sure they're well grounded. That seems, yeah, I'm, I'm sure that the bidding process showed that they can do it for much, much less than that.
I think one of the signs was going on the system pole and might be one of them.
I thought there were four as well. I don't know, I don't know why we have three in here. I'm sure there's a good explanation.
Well, that might be my fault. In fact, actually, I, um, there, so we need to review the motion on that, but it looks like you nailed the, the three ones. Well, yeah, you nailed the three that are sure. The fourth one ordered the location. We need to review because the motion was to order fi- to have five, I thought, and, um, one at each entrance and then one on Champion Circle, is what I thought happened. But in re- looking at it, it looks like potentially the La Roca one was not somehow included, and I have not gone back to personally reviewing. So when I saw these three, I thought that that's what it pertained to, that you had cleaned up. Excuse me, a bit of a mess from a conversation we had because we, the original proposal was to put them at the entrances to Wood Creek.
Yes, uh, I, I thought there were four. I, I, I actually would give with Melanie. I'm covering for her and I share a, a death in her family. Uh, and I'm, I'm sorry, I, I, I don't know. I think it should be four.
And so this one on.
When we talked about the, the fifth one, I, maybe, forgive me, I don't know all your streets, but, um.
The one on Champion Circle is actually, it's that, that's the incorrect one.
Yeah, I think, I think we took that out.
Yeah, it's a, the other one's supposed to be the one on Wood Creek Drive. So Wood Creek Drive is supposed to have two, um, entrance to Rock Hollow had one, and that fourth one that was ordered. Thank you, um, yeah, so the fourth one was, I think the discussion is, it's either La Roca or Champions. For some reason, I thought there were supposed to be five, but then Kevin didn't in the order, anyway. Yeah, so what's in this packet right here is not good on that front alone. Like, there's just that one item, cause it has that sign on, on Champion Circle. So we know we have four. Is there a way where we can move forward tonight without
Yeah.
that component finalized and then knowing that you're gonna come back with that?
You can easily change the location without changing price.
Okay.
If you change the number, then you're.
Well, we do have four.
Yeah, so we'll just put four in here and that'll give us a flexible.
One, one other point, um, we don't have decided, we don't have three hundred thousand budgeted in current or ongoing. And I disagree that the driveways would come out of bond.
We can check on it, it's.
Yes.
We called the bond attorney, um, talked to the, talked to our city attorney.
Even though they're pretty much private property.
They're not, it's part of.
My reason.
Yeah, and it's. Cleaning up the unfinished work from the, the roadwork. They did not get, you know, ninety-eight percent of our driveways were properly connected. These houses were not.
We've had this discussion.
So, I, I have some reservations about three hundred, I know it's not three hundred thousand dollars, it's, the bid is a two ninety-eight, a bid estimate is two hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. And when you break it up into little pieces, it makes better sense. Um, even though I have objections, it's a little late in the game, have objections about the speed hubs. Um, for the record, I have objections to speed hubs. Um, all these other things are, are things that need to be done.
For the record, just this morning, on my walk, um, coming back from my loop past your house and, and, you know, coming back around, coming back down Augusta Drive. First, there's a truck coming up from La Roca at a highway speed. Uh, and I'm like, slow it down, slow it down. He stopped, rolled down his window and accosted me and told me he was doing a speed limit. He was, there's no way on God's green earth that he's doing a speed limit. He's yelling at me, pressing me, he guns it, burns rubber around the corner, past your house. So that was one. So I go down to La Roca Lane. So that was one. So I go down to La Roca Lane, which is my usual route. I turn around, I start coming back. And a big black pickup truck, not at a higher rate of speed, but obviously wasn't paying attention to what was going on. And I'm on the side of the road. There's no place for me to go to the left because that part of Augusta is washed out. And I can't just walk on somebody's yard. There wasn't really any place for me to go and he came like right by me before he saw me and, and swerved away. If there had been properly marked speed hub at that, like, none of that seems to have happened. Neither one of those things would have happened this morning. So, I mean, you can say all you want about speed hubs. You can say all you want about $50,000. My life to me is worth more than $50,000. And if one speed bump can save my life, I can get to walking.
Well, and we also have to consider not everything is reported. Like Jacob helped them out off, off the ground a couple of months ago, who was ran off the road while walking. Not reported. Monica Burke, Sydney, what, S, whatever, who is it? Sure, her mother was in the ICU for several weeks after they ran off the road. Yeah, I mean. It's just because we don't have somebody dead yet and documented.
Yeah, that's the point. Yeah. Oh, I get a question about this. Could we have a vote?
I would look at that. Alright, so motion on the floor is to accept the 2024 Safety Enhancement Program prepared by Cleveland Turk. And post the bid package as soon as possible. On favor, please raise your hands. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Alright, moving on to item number 10. Uh, discuss a perfect action to accept the 2024, 2025, uh, proposed annual budget submitted to the city and submitted to the city secretary. For, um, this, my full record, um, you know, we, I sent out a note today about, um, about having a subtle meeting on Wednesday, the 21st. Specifically on the budget. I didn't have a chance to really talk to, um, Mr. Bates about that. Um, and whether, you know, we can, this, at, at what level do we need to discuss it? And can we knock things out at night or do we, can we just sort of pass on this for the night and bring it up next Monday? And get it knocked out. It's within the, it's within the timeline of our, of our planning calendar. Um, but just in the interest of time, it's all right. Do we, do we take this one on and the next or do we move on?
Yeah, I, I think our intention was to make sure that, uh, like the council was informed of what the budget looked like, what was presented. To make sure that everybody, everybody had a clean starting point. Uh, and then, yeah, certainly getting into, uh, much more detail on the 21st could work great. That way you can have a robust discussion about it. So whatever the council feels more comfortable with, we just want to accept the budget that's presented, uh, the starting point to negotiate on. Um, and then, you know, start putting, you know, priorities in a lot of robust discussion into, I think that's a great starting point. If you feel comfortable that everybody's seen it and, you know, doesn't need a, a recorded vote for that, I think you can basically either way, it would be my recommendation.
Um.
I'm having to, I mean, this, this. Full transparency, you know, the, the, the town for two weeks while a lot of this was going on and came back and said, well, you know, when I left, we had a. A bit of a proposed budget that we were satisfied with and this was, you know, getting, trying to get the, the, the county. But it was basically a done deal.
I move to accept the 2024, 2025. Proposed annual budget as submitted in this packet.
My second.
To, uh, kind of explain or hopefully catch everyone up, I guess, is that, uh, you know, council voted because we were working off some not great deadlines. And then we learned those weren't our deadlines. Time for time, they continue to work. However, another vote was not taken to update those documents yet. We need to move forward with some of this because we have to accept something now and it starts a time clock essentially for us. And we've got to get that clock started before the end of August in order to make the later deadlines. Because it kind of all works back from these finite, final points. So this was a little bit just kind of cleanup of a bunch of loose hairs because the other component we didn't have was the final haze county tax numbers. Which we got post that vote, post our last budget review meeting even. So that shifted our tax rate projections, not significantly. We weren't far off, but it did shift them. Um, there were also some typos on the years. Sorry, I didn't catch that. Uh, so that's kind of why this is in tonight. If we accept this tonight, we start that clock and, which is a good day. We want the clock going. Because it means we can wrap this up. Uh, I think what Mr. Bates was talking about was the concept of, do we want to make any edits tonight? Or just kind of accept this as our starting ground tonight and then know that on the 21st, we'll get back into that kind of like raw budget discussion. So I'm okay with planning for the 21st, so long as you can be there. I think that will be crucial. Okay.
Definitely.
Okay. Um, I support that just because it's already a long evening. My kids, I gotta wake up in the morning. Not that everything's about me, but. I, I think that if we had another specific budget meeting, kind of kept it for that alone, I, I feel like that would be a wise use of our time.
I would also like to point out that I have four very large intense documents coming up on the agenda. So the less we can spend this, knowing that we're going to have another meeting, the better. I'm going to try to do as quickly as I can about those, but I think they are big documents. So I just wanted to pick that up there as well.
Alright, so the motion on the floor is to, um, accept the revision made to the proposed annual budget submitted to the city secretary. Um, with, with caveat, yeah, uh, from our opinion, so.
I just wanted to highlight, so this is where we fixed typos in the years. So nothing else was changed on this, but it is in front of you in case. You were worried about what was in the packet and you caught those typos. So the city secretary does have a clean document on that.
Alright, so, you know, with the thought that we will meet again here at, at 5:00 PM on the 21st. Um, because there are, there were some tweaks to the budgets. Um, that have been reviewed and discussed and then any other things that we need to do before we just finalize that thing and send it up to the county. Um, will we handle on the 21st? So, um, but on the main motion, on favor, sit by by raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, and our, so we're not really ready to set the date for the public hearing, correct?
We can, so if we're ready to move forward on that, um, the motion would be to direct staff. To set the public hearing and it would be based on those timelines. Because now with that motion that we just did, it starts the clock. So we, we can't have a hearing for 15 days, but we have to have it within 30.
Okay, 30 days.
Yes. I move to direct staff to call the public hearing in the appropriate timeframe.
My second.
Was that specific enough? Did I need to say which hearings?
No, I think.
Okay.
Right, any further discussion on that, that worked for debate? And please raise your hand. Say aye if you approve. Okay, um, item number 12 is to, um. Just to think, block, block election on proposed budget and for spending for the city would be for the celebration and today, I obviously didn't have 24. Mayor for Tim Hines.
So, um, I move that we approve a budget of $5,000. For the 40th anniversary event for the city, even with the donation, six grand?
Oh, it's on your, hold on.
Okay, $5,000. To repeat, I move that we approve a budget of $5,000 for the city of Wood Creek 40th anniversary event.
My second. I'll give it to Chris though.
That's a good second. They're not always good ones, but this is a good one. Uh, so the spending is there, basically just as kind of a formality. We have all agreed to throw the party. Uh, we didn't know how much we were going to be spending on the party. We had some estimates before. Now we've gotten into spending, so it's just sort of like, okay, let's acknowledge that we're doing this spending. Have you noticed, uh, Mayor Roscoe has elicited donations. The donations are pretty much covering all of our swag items in the snow cone stand. Um, that leaves Wood Creek with a, oh, the, the donations for CYJ are covering a large portion of our food and baked goods. So that leaves Wood Creek with, um, a small remainder of this. So as you can see, we've only spent $4,300 total, but we're going to get 2,500 of that in donations. So we're well under our five grand cap, but I just, I, I bumped it in case we had any other incidentals. Like, we, we ended up needing to hire an officer that wasn't in our original plan because we do, we are allowing alcohol and it is a public event. Right? So in case there's any other of those like last minute little things, we wanted to have that option. Or, you know, heaven forbid somebody write something, right? But, um. Anyway, so it's just kind of cleaning up business. If y'all have questions, um, Mayor Roscoe and I can definitely help because we're on the planning committee for that.
Alright, the question then, um, but on the motion to accept the budget of $5,000 in through spending for the 40th celebrations. On favor, please raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, I remember 13, discussion to get appropriate action to update city of Wood Creek procurement policy. Councilmember Rimmer.
I move that council adopts the resolution 2024 dash 08 dash 14 dash 01. Updating the procurement policy.
My second, my second's fine.
Um, Hines?
Yeah.
Mayor?
Please.
Um, this effect of the procurement policy is merging the current policy with the previous policy. And will create greater transparency for the citizens of our fair city. I want to thank the city attorney for their work on this document. Uh, the city attorney has two comments we will see on the right side of the document in your packet. Um, for the sake of a shorter meeting, I would like to jump directly to considering these comments. And present possible evidence that I see could be of this solution. Um, after the three amendments I have proposed are disposed of, we can talk about the document as a whole. I think by benefits might shorten the time we spend on this document and address the main questions that council may have. On page 322 of the package, section 3 dot 01. That section means that as the city administrator or designated may approve expenditures not to exceed $1,500. Expenditures subject to this exception will be reported in the monthly check registers or other internal records. And regularly monitored by the administrator and the governing body. The city attorney's side comments on the document are referring to or asking about the defining of regularly monitored aspect. My first amendment is, I amend by striking and regularly monitored by the administrator and the governing body. From section 3.01.
So it's starting at and, striking all of it. My second.
Thank you. Um, since the expenditures are already being reported to council in the monthly check registers. And to be seen as the way of the regular monitoring by council is referring, it is kind of redundant to restate that regularly monitoring. Is occurring in the section.
So the proposed amendment there to strike from the common on, that will stand with other internal records that would not be regularly monitored because it's already, they were regularly monitored. So, on favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Mayor, mayor?
Number one, number two.
Um, this line also sets the limit for the administrator position without the need of first coming before council for approval. The 1,500 spending authority for the administrator was what the previous to the current policy. Had in place. Council makes use to reconsider this number and instead make that limit up to $5,000. I amend, striking 3.01 by, I amend section 3.01 by striking $1,500. And replacing it with $4,999 anytime it is found in this section.
My second.
Thank you. May I continue?
Can you clarify what you just said though?
On section 3.01.
Anytime it's found in this section.
In that section. It's, it's found twice. Thanks. Um, we have assumed that the administrator only has the authority to spend funds to maintain and repair city property. But the existing administrator ordinance actually doesn't say, have any statement saying such. So I thought, well, if we just make it a 5,000, which has been the recommendation of our, um, advisor and of our, uh. Jim? Sorry. Um, um, because, and I even, when I went to edit, which will come down to in the city administrator ordinance. I wrote things like overseeing the repair maintenance of city property. Uh, overseeing still being of the strongest indicator that spending authority is being given. So I actually went and re, we've been assuming it was there, but when I reviewed everything, it actually wasn't. So I think moving to 5,000 makes the most sense. True as of all.
Alright, to 4,999.
4,991. Because once we hit the 5,000 mark, the whole.
We go as a city brass. Alright. Um, no, again, we'll take a vote on the amendment to strike 1,500 in both places in 3 dot 01. And change that number to 4,991. On favor, please sit by by raising your hand.
Aye.
Thank you.
And Mayor, mayor? On page 322 of your packet, section 501. Procedures for purchases of $4,099, $999 or less. I amend by striking items not subject to this process, including utility bills. Lease payments, membership dues, employee reimbursements, travel fees and fuel from section 5.01.
Second.
Thank you. Um, the city attorney's side comment on this document pointing out that these items listed are not actually subject to procurement processes. So simply removing this wording still leaves everything else intact.
So we're striking the whole second sentence of the paragraph.
Yep, from 5.01. And city secretary, I will be sending you all these motions in an email.
The only one I don't have is the one you just made. I was, I'm sharing a document.
I'm going to send everything anyway.
Okay, so the, the amendment is to strike. Um, everything after that first sentence, which says purchases under 5,000 may be made through a simplified requisitions process, period. Alright, on favor, please sit by by raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Alright. Mr. Rimmer?
Those are my three amendments.
Those are three amendments. So any discussion on the, on the rest of the policy? Then we'll vote on the main motion as with these three amendments. As in the procurement policy, on favor, please sit by by raising your hand.
Sweet badge.
Alright, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
If you have a question, were you able to review this?
Yeah. Yeah, I was able to talk to Chris and, and had some good conversation and I did, you know, discount raising the, the 5,000. I think it's just kind of more of standard.
Okay.
Of course, great.
Alright, I remember 14, discuss like appropriate action, sending Wood Creek fund account.
Um, I move that council adopts resolution 2024 dash 08 14 02, updating the fund balance policy.
Second.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Sir. Once again, I want to thank the city attorney for their work on this document, for the sake of time. But during this meeting on this document, I would move directly to the city attorney's comment found on the right side of the document. And offer amendments that addresses them and then council can return to consideration of the document and the poll. I will start with the city attorney's side comment on this document found on page 331 of the packet, under the definition section. under the definitions section. I amend the definitions section under committed funds found on page three three one by replacing the highlighted word government with the words city council.
Second.
Thank you.
You second? I'm gonna vote on that. All in favor of the decision, yeah?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Uh, next amendment. I amend the definitions section under assigned fund balance found on page three three one by replacing the word intent with the word instruction.
Yes, second.
Thank you.
All right, maybe my moan over here could be considered as a remark.
All right, so the amendment is to replace the word intent with the word instruction in the highlighted area. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimously.
Can I just pause on that point? Um, I, so noticing the lawyer's comment that I think is a great time for all of us on council to make a note of this moving forward, especially as we're approaching a bunch of budget amendments that are coming up based on the way the city was operating under a previous administration, that whenever we propose to spend money that we haven't already plugged into our budget, that we really need to make sure we identify where we plan for it to come from. And when I say money we haven't identified in our budget, I mean, like, if we know we want to plant trees and we say we're gonna spend five thousand dollars planting trees, that's not what I'm talking about. We don't need to do it for every tree that we bring up. If, if we didn't plan to plant any trees and I come in and I say, I don't plant five trees, I've got to tell y'all where in my, our budget we have that money, or if I'm asking to pull from reserves, right? And we can get staffs help with that, or we can ask staff to give us information on that. But that's something I feel like maybe as council members, we have not collectively been doing our part on, um, except for you. You've done it every time. So I won't throw you under the bus on that one. But I just wanted to kind of uh, point that out, that that's something that we all need to work on. Except for Richard.
I'm kind of hoping that we could change the procedure a little bit, that when, when items are coded, that the budgeted number is reviewed at the same time. This will prevent a lot of miscoding.
It's, it's.
Well, I'm giving specific because um, one of the first things that was coded under fund view was it's cardboard street signs. And under street signs, we had six thousand dollars. And that was to replace stop signs and professional signs. But the very first item coded in there was those specific radar signs, which are not, that was sixteen thousand. So immediately we were ten thousand over that budget. But if it were part of the procedure to, before I code this in this category, I'm gonna see what's in the budget. And maybe when I said signs, it, it pumped me to the long category.
Just pick a different one, okay, go to the name of the, the name of the account.
Right.
Okay.
So.
Okay, now that makes sense. All right, what else we have?
Main motion.
All right, so we've well voted on the main motion to um, update the city wood group fund balance policy resolution two zero two four dash zero eight dash one four dash one zero two. All in favor, please raise your hands. Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Well, we go to number fifteen, discussion to make appropriate action on edits to ordinance thirty point one five municipal manager administrator. Mr. Burmer?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I'm, this is gonna be long, Susan, so I'm definitely going to be sending it to you. I move that council accepts the edits to the draft ordinance chapter thirty point one five municipal manager administrator and that this ordinance is returned in formal format. And asks the city attorney to create an ordinance amending the code to change the title's municipal manager administrator to simply administrator throughout the code, all for final council approval. Thank you. Mayor?
Yes.
I stated the motion in such a way as to not direct staff to make any of these edits so that council can decide, as it may be the best, make the best sense for me to make these edits, since I'm very well deep in this document. Um, so whatever council makes any decisions on any edits to this document, I will take it down and then I'll bring it back and then I will give it to staff or the city attorney and they'll put it in the formal format. Um, but I just think that might be easier. One of the initial impulses for taking on updating this section of our code was that some of the duties assigned to the city secretary position by the state is currently placed as duties of the administrator. I thought perhaps council is not allowed to do this and that we might need to correct this in our code. After discussion with Charlie, our city attorney, he pointed me to a passage in our local government code, chapter two two dot zero seven one, which I have printed out for your reference. Um, yeah, thank you. Um, it appears that it's not an issue as we thought. Um, city att, city question, city attorney? Um, are there parameters or limits regarding council's ability to assign officer duties to other municipal officers?
No, that's a very open-ended question.
I'm sorry.
Can you please repeat? Can you please?
Well, so, so what has happened, to give you background, um, currently, there's two parts of the duties that the state has stated go to the city secretary position. In the ordinance, in our existing ordinance, we have those two duties, like of the administrator duties, noting that they were by state given to the city secretary, but we've decided as a city, give them to the administrator. And initially, I thought that was an issue because of state mandates. But then Charlie said, actually, it's not. This council is actually allowed to take duties from an officer and this, give them to another officer.
The clause C.
Yeah, on clause C.
May confer.
Hmm?
May confer on other municipal officers, the powers and duties of an officer provided for by this section.
Yeah, I was just, it was more of a general question and maybe it's offline and not about this document per se. Um, but yeah, I was just like, is there a rule? So what, council can take a move and?
There might be, depends on what you want to do. What about that?
I will just, yeah, we'll, we'll take this, we'll take this offline, because it was just a general question. You could, I was getting confused at that one. So as part of that discussion, the duties I'm referring to are on page three four two of the packet, highlighted in yellow. I think it's worth discussing um, the pros and cons of the duties remaining with the administrator versus moving them to the city secretary position as state places them. My question was asked for you, Mike. With your experience as an administrator, do you see the benefit, benefit for the city to place these specific duties with the administrator position versus the secretary position? And how would you describe those benefits?
Yeah, well, I, I would kind of first of all say, it really depends on, on your staff capabilities and uh, the, their ability to meet those obligations. And so I, I don't know, I, I would certainly defer to, you know, Jim and, and Susan a little bit, because we wouldn't want to per se strategically give something to, back to Susan that, you know, she's not competent in, in doing, you know, in the sense that, hey, hey, you're gonna do this and, well, I've never done that before. Um, and so, you know, not knowing your staff completely, I think, you know, getting their opinions on that would be, would be really good. Um, but also, I, I feel like um, your staff have to be able to meet your functions and, as, as a governing body. And so however you feel that that's going to be, you know, major vote, I, I, I didn't take to come in, you know, I, I definitely need to know you guys a couple of weeks and be able to, hey, this is what you should do. Because you guys know your staff and your capabilities and your visions much better than I do at this point. So I think good recommendations and definitely, you know, think that those are, are, are good if your staff or, or, you know, Jim feels like that is something that would be helpful to him and his group. Um, so I, Jim, I, I think to throw you under the bus a little bit, but I just felt like, you know, you're probably in the best position to say whether your guys are able to meet some of those changes or not.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, may I continue?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, if council wishes to keep these duties, it's, it would be a very simple edit. But I'm also gonna now just speak a little more generally about the document. And we'll see that we changed the title of the position from municipal manager administrator to simply administer, administrator. Um, the city attorney has explained to me that this simple ordinance changing the title across all our code is possible. And that is what is being referred to in the main motion. Anywhere our code says municipal manager or any similar reference, it will simply read administrator. Once this ordinance is granted and approved by council, of course, I will look to the city attorney to provide us with such an ordinance. I have also recategorized and renumbered the ordinance, the ordinance to make it easier to read and reference. You will now see that in the code, rather than, rather than just a list of duties, it is broken into sections and individually numbered, which will help any references being made to this code easier to find and understand. Previously, you had to read a full code for this position to find a very specific reference. The red sections are additional clarifying language. Some of these are simply that, they were, they were in a different location in, in the code, but were moved because of my reorganization of the structure. Some of this is simply stating in code what we already understand for the position. But additionally, some of this is state language that hadn't yet found its way into our ordinances, such as on pages three four two of the packet. When it comes to the city treasurer duties, the red wording is taken from state code for that position and placing it in our code. It is the only wording that was omitted from that section of state code. Much of this adding clarifying language is based on the idea that not everyone involved in city government is going to be digging through state code, but will most likely only be looking directly at our local ordinances. So having the state code language described in our Wood Creek code will hopefully be helpful. Um, so possible then. I'm just going to throw it out and council can decide with it. I amend to edit the draft ordinance and retain the duties assigned by the state to the city secretary position and leave them as part of the administrative duties.
All second. I, I have a question about that though. Um, your edit here, or what it says here in yellow, where it recognizes that these are typically given to the city secretary, is that?
That was actually part of the code.
Of our code?
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
This sentence right above it of what it's saying, this is being moved, that's an addition.
So I, and, but, so you added the for reference local government code onto there? Where it references, it doesn't reference this though, two two dot oh seven oh one?
No, it's. Okay, fine. Uh, yes, the green entry, let me write it in.
Yeah, I think it would be relevant on that section to reference this so that if this ever comes up again and my memory is failing me, I have that reference. Does that make sense?
Oh, you would reference twenty-two oh seventy-one?
Right, because if that had been there, you would have immediately gone there, seen this, and we would have potentially avoided some of the legal fees and consultations, obviously not all of it, because there are other additional edits.
Yeah.
But I think anytime we can reference the code that's governing what we're doing, it would be good. Um.
Good idea.
Jim, go ahead.
Can I just throw in there? Because this is one of those, this can also just do comma as amended.
Yeah.
Because it will get, it will get amended in that way. It won't matter if it's oh seven one A, B, oh seven one two, or seven two. If it's amended, we can track that and, and it'll show up in your reference.
So rather than issuing a bunch of amendments right now, we just say as amendment amended tonight, and you're tracking all of this.
Okay.
And you implement it and then when it comes, so we don't have to have seven votes.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah, I only have.
Do you understand you? No, I was saying as far as the reference to two oh seven one, as amended, because state laws, when they change, we don't want to have to.
Oh, okay, amended, yeah. So you don't seal it in concrete access.
Yeah, it's like, well, it was, it was oh seven one, and oh seven one's gone, so you're just out of luck. Say no, so as amended.
Yeah.
We can follow the statute.
So I'd be, I'd be referencing section two two point oh seven one, and I wouldn't do the C part, right?
Right, you just say comma and as amended.
Comma as amended. Thank you.
I'm sorry, but yes, you can do it, what you said, well, I do that too.
I would also like to do that, yeah.
Do what?
Instead of voting seven times tonight, I mean, we may be done with edits or amendments, but um.
In my notes, or, yeah, that was my only amendment for this.
Okay, so the, the amendment then is to keep this as part of the administrator's.
Not with it, basically.
And Mr. Burton? I mean, Mr. Bay said, you know, said more input would be important on that. I mean, do you have, do you have a feeling about him or anything? Is it fine?
I'm good.
Okay. Is it better?
I just wanted to put a comment though, from that, um, you did say earlier that uh, Mr. Burton is very busy. He has the account, uh, the construction background where he can really be useful. And city secretary um, has a business degree, which includes a great deal of accounting. So as far as talent, she still has the talent to do this general accounting uh, task.
I think Mr. Burton taught it.
What?
They had a business degree, taught accounting.
Yeah. Okay.
It's not, I'm just not a builder.
Um, I, so on these items in particular, both of these are actually functions of third parties. So I don't, I don't see a problem with them being under the city administrator specifically because it really is just sort of like a, a tracking versus, what I'm saying is, fund view is our accountant, right? And then, uh, council's already been talking about hiring a third party person for assistance as well, right? So what this is, is just making sure the records are kept, which all the staff sort of verifies, right, and, and does. But the city administrator is the person under our other, these policies we just talked about, who is actually tracking spending and reporting to council. So by leaving this under that person, that job title, it actually aligns with those other policies we have in place and with how the city's been functioning for a while. The other one, keeping a register of bonds and bills, again, we have like a, a debt service company and uh, before it was the county, you know, I mean, we're, these are both functions that aren't actually directly managed by staff at this point in time. So I think leaving it how it's been is probably accurate.
All right. So we haven't voted on it. We'll do that now. So um, the amendment was to leave this section, you know, under the administrator position, so we're gonna take a vote on that. All in favor, please, raise your hands. Say aye.
Aye.
No, there is, no, no decision. So we'll do that and um, then we vote on the main motion to adopt. All in favor?
It's not true adopted.
Well, I mean, it's to adopt edits. The motion, the motion for the edits to go back. I mean, we're not adopting it as it, we're, we're adopting the motion to edit and bring it back in final.
As well, they're gonna add that other element where we're asking the city attorney to create an ordinance that does a name change.
Correct, all, correct. I could not write that in motion.
I, I will send all this away.
Okay, so, um, all in favor, um, please signify by raising your hands. Say aye.
Aye.
All right, so. That's it. You got some work to do with some of that?
Covered, wasn't it, not much, actually.
No, clean all this up and get it, get it ready to go.
Yeah.
Gonna take some more. Um, all right, number sixteen is to, discussion to make appropriate action on edits to ordinance chapter thirty dot one six municipal secretary, Mr. Burmer?
I'm gonna find my, look, there is my notes, correct. Um, the next document that we'll be entertaining in a bit, um, has a little yellow or little pink highlight across it. Um, my printer didn't print in color, so just pretend that that's all in red, you know, in addition. Um, this is something I thought I'd layer, but I'm gonna first start with the main motion. I move that council accepts the edits to ordinance chapter thirty point one six municipal secretary, and this ordinance is returned in formal format per final council approval.
A second?
Thank you. Again, the best stated motion is in sexual regards, want to direct staff to make these edits, the vacuum maybe possibly make these edits, and then work with staff to put it into formal format. Um, based on this discussion regarding the administrative duties, this will also impact this ordinance. But before we go into that, after reviewing uh these two drafts, I realized that they may be worth considering to mirror some of the language found in the administrative language under the uh office hereby established section. Um, we don't have anything under the city secretary, so I'm presenting um to you as a handout, just kind of mirroring what we say in the administrative position. Um, I'd like to add that. It might.
So this.
Look at it. Aye. Okay.
So so.
So the thing, the all the pink stuff is considered red, and all this stuff above it is already in existence.
Okay.
And this is also telling you the location of the ordinance that would be in. Okay. Did I make a motion on that?
Not yet.
We haven't.
I amend to include edits to thirty thirty point one six, section A, office of municipal secretary created, as in the handout.
Better.
Thank you.
All right. Any steps on that? Uh, so.
Got one question.
Yes.
Three, city council may remove the city secretary at any time by majority vote of its members with or without cause. City attorney, is that, what is that number specifically as far as majority vote?
So if I may answer what Charlie, I I had the discussion already on this very specific one. Um, he said that's that's existing, but just to notify, uh, so this is also on the administrator position. But that that with cause and without cause are different processes.
I'm not concerned about the with or without cause. I'm not talking about the majority vote and what that number actually is.
Yeah, I ran this by it and the city attorney approved it, so.
Well, it would be, it sounds like it would be determined based on the meeting, if it's a special meeting or a regular meeting.
Majority vote is gonna be a majority. My understanding would be, and I haven't asked Charlie, because I didn't know about that, but uh, they already discussed this, but depending on the language, a majority vote of the council is going to be all those members present and seated. And so if you have a vacancy, that is not gonna count a inch to. But if you don't have a vacancy, it's gonna be the majority, which is not gonna be super, which is regular majority of the entire council.
So sixty percent would be the majority? Fifty one percent?
Three votes.
Fifty one, I know, I guess I'd increase it to sixty, okay.
But isn't generally the city secretary under the city city administrator or city manager? Usually that's that's a separate function. And if this passes, is this for all city staff? Will they all be hired fired by the council?
Hopefully, no.
So the city administrator is over all other staff. The city of Wood Creek has been operating under that fashion without it specifically designated very well in our code. It basically said in one area, right, that like if the city secretary kind of reported this and administrator on this one thing, that or but the way the city was operating. And so as you described in an executive session, which you were just talking about how other cities operate, so I hope it's okay for me to afford. You said it can be done both ways, in that some cities designate some parts of the city secretary's job to be under a city administrator. And then some cities keep it all under city council. Right? Um, it looks like under this, we're on, we're moving more towards a purist of it's under this council.
But the no, so no, the language that we have is that it's under the city, it's under the administrator, but under by review of council, council can scalpel and.
That, so that's the previous the previous ordinance that we just discussed, the city administrator. If all city employees are under the administrator position.
In that, but then this, I mean.
This is also, so it's a, it's a and. Does it make sense?
Since, let me just make a say about it and understand.
Council has the power always.
Right, so and that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. So so if the administrator um decides to discipline of an employee in any way, or terminate or hire, um, or give him a raise or whatever. The administrator can do that under his own or her own authority. Um, but council can review any of those decisions and change them. And also, the council could come in without the authority, without um, even speaking to the administrator and say, you know, uh, what's the exact language? Um, you are removed.
And that's for all city employees?
Any city employee. You know, so so council has the final authority. What we're doing is we're delegating to the to the administrator the authority to to do it on a day to day in the office kind of thing, but if we think that they made a mistake, we can review that decision and bring it up, you know, for a vote of the council and whatever the council decides would would ride.
But that is.
Is that the is that the truth?
Yes, but we are literally talking about the ordinance that will like the other item we've already voted out.
No, I know. I think that's why personally, why I was a little confused is because in reading this, it almost like it was contradicting it.
It's it's.
And since we're just getting that tonight, I wasn't able to like.
So the we had discussions with Charlie, what it is is you are still stating your council's rights as well as councils deciding this other, like, the city secretary is under the administrative position and all cities employees are under the administrator. It's it's stating both, like both exist at the same time.
Do you?
So I think what without having heard the conversation, I think what it was saying is you'd have to create this office and this position pursuant to state law and what those what those responsibilities and duties are going to be, and then you can delegate the supervision of that employee to another employee, such as city administrator.
But that would still be prudent to have added, yeah, into our code. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so.
And this says with or without cause, aren't employees somehow protected? Or you're you're bypassing that.
So if it's with cause, then there is a process filled out, and I think that's what you were saying. You also visited with the attorney stuff about is that there is a, there is notice and a hearing required. And then the vote of council. And so let me double check that real quick, because.
But what's the process without cause?
Without cause, it is just the majority vote of council.
You could you could remove a person without, I know this is my, my statement is this. My statement is that you could, without cause, could mean that you're just doing a reduction of force. And so that person is being removed. There's no, the the cause isn't because of their activity or performance, it's because you're eliminating the position.
But the city secretary is the only position required in Texas.
It have to.
Well, mayor.
Those duties have to be fulfilled. As we've also just learned tonight, they can be designated to anyone.
Yeah. That's what, actually going back to that initial question, that was one of the things like if we were tiny, it's a busy tiny five there fifty fifty population, and there's the mayor and us five council members, and we can't afford us any of these state mandated jobs, could council assign duties to, you know, individual people on council? I'm sorry, I know you're reading.
Sure, you got it. I was looking for that provision.
Well, I think it's much like how our city used to run. We used to have only one staff member who literally said it all. And they were the city administrator, technically.
No, they're city secretary.
I I understand that's the job title, but the performance of what they did was also the city administrator. They managed everything going on in the city, right? And in addition to the duties outlined as municipal secretary or clerk. So. So it would just, it would be just as easy to say, we only have a city administrator who performs the duties of a municipal secretary or clerk. It is the job title seems interchangeable at this point, as long as you specify that they're doing those duties.
So I'll just have a double check in at twenty two oh seven seven. That's where you have the removal of municipal officers for cause, which is gonna be here in competency, corruption, misconduct, or malfeasance, which are really strong, you know, causes. And so a lot of times, you know, we've got it here, you've got language for you don't need cause, because it could just be something more along the lines of you, you and and that individual are just no longer in alignment with your with your provisional services or or whatever it is. So you can have it um without cause, but if you're going to have cause, that's it's gonna be one of those things when you've got to give that notice, you gotta have a hearing. Um, and then the removal is effective only of two thirds of the electoral room in vote in favor of of a resolution declaring lack of competence. So I need to double check on that.
Yeah, we talked to, you know, we talked about that, because the the two separate clauses is, so if you if you bring it up on a resolution, the lack of competence is two thirds.
Yeah.
Um, if it's for cause, it doesn't require.
So I know all this is. Thank you. All this is stating based on what Charlie, this discussion with me is, it's just stating councils' rights in our ordinance. And again, we have it for the city administrator. This is just mirroring that whole top section. It's just mirroring what we have in other positions.
And it has to come back anyway, too.
Yes, this is just an edit.
Yeah. So y'all could potentially don't want to check that.
Or you'll double check it if it's good to go, then yes, we're just like you said, you're just reprimanding that we're gonna edit it in line with state law.
She has a star by it.
Yeah.
And I was just gonna ask on state, so I really would prefer to not have the word never.
Oh, yeah.
And just have to say, you shall.
Where? Shall not have any authority.
Yeah.
Where? On six. Strike never, request of not.
Shall not have any authority.
Okay. Might want to tell him to look at it, too.
They might have been.
I don't know, okay, um.
Okay, and but this one's not public with agenda.
I know.
You can't vote on it.
Yeah, it's your turn.
Is it?
The the packet is literally just the items. And so we never put any attachments in the packet. You can still post and have a packet and have the discussion. As long as your items are described appropriately. It's when you reference the packet in an item that the and the packet's missing, that you can't bring out that item. We posted the extras into the packet to give as much as possible, but and it's not ideal to have stuff come in on the desk. For me personally, it was very confusing. So thank you for taking the time, but.
But so the public doesn't know anything about.
We're not voting on this thing. All we're doing is voting to add this when we go through the edits, and then we'll come back in the final form in the packet.
And forgive me if I don't understand, but it this does not sound like it's changing anything about the way we already operate or state law, how it makes our city functions, no matter what, correct?
No. I am not looking at what you currently have on the board.
No, I meant this, the the big thing is not new. Uh, wording.
I thought you said all of the pink stuff was new stuff that you.
It's 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 it wasn't in existence.
So it's new to you.
It's new to us.
Changing the way we operate as a city or the way we're governed by the state. So all it is is incorporating language into our personal ordinance and mirror what already is, correct? That sounds perfect, correct?
So we might need to, since we previously discussed, because I don't think I want to make an amendment to it, but we've already discussed, we're going to keep the city secretary duties that within the search, so I'm gonna make that edit without actually making a motion and voting, because we've already made that motion. Um, on on the line eighty five, there's a language added that from the recent.
Do we want to vote on your amendment to the thirty got sixteen?
Okay.
On there, you did, you did state editors of amendment.
I did, yes.
So we can vote on adding thirty sixteen into the document. On favor, please, right, can I say?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Next, thank you.
All right, um, Mr. Grummer. Thank you. Go draw my note real quick, see if I can. Oh, and on line eighty five, when you scroll down, there's an additional language. Um, what that is about the city secretary is public information officer. Um, previously, council had already passed an ordinance resolution regarding Public Information Act, um, just I read through all that and realized there's one line missing, and so I put it into our code because we've already established this. So that's it? Since we've already discussed, I think.
So um, so we can vote on the main motion, which is to include the edits to the ordinance chapter thirty point one six municipal secretary. Um, include those edits, bring it back in final form. With the thirty point one six as a. On favor, please, right, can I say?
Aye.
All opposed? Well, thank you. All right, so we're seeing those final formatted copies. I remember seventeen has got to take the actions to offer our staff to purchase continuous read dark skies meter to be installed on city owned property.
I move that we direct staff to buy a continuous reading dark skies meter to be installed on city owned property.
I second.
I thought we did that. We we've never made them.
So we had the discussion, council member Grummer attempted to make.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Rule and. And then he never did.
And then did.
But now there is no need to correct current stack appropriately.
All right, thank you.
And so this item is to clean up that business. Council never took a vote, but we did collectively imply that we were interested in this.
Yes.
We have volunteers lined up to collect the data, do all the work for it. We did potentially lose the discount that was being offered at that time, but um, we can resubmit for the discount and the um basically you just they'll they'll help us. The dark sky community will help us resubmit for the discount, but before we purchase, we have, like, when we're purchasing, we have to do this specific request, so um but so Cindy Longo Cassidy can help with that. She can help with like making sure we get the discount ad in. Um, she, her contact in this email and um I put city owned property be and left it vague because I felt that there might be people that would advise us in the proper place to install this, considering surrounding lighting. Meaning city hall sounds great, but what if the lights here don't ever turn off, like at the water tower, whatever, I don't know. I don't know. I'm not here, I've been there enough, but uh actually, I retract that statement. I'm here plenty, only. Uh, but you know, maybe one of the parks might be a better place for reading, so I was gonna let this be up to the people navigating installation.
Okay.
Makes sense. Okay, so uh, the motion is to direct staff to purchase continuous read in dark skies meters to install on city owned property. All on favor, please, right, can I say?
Aye.
You, unanimous. And number eighteen, this doesn't take possible action to direct staff to install parking signs in bold.
So this is also cleaning up a little bit of business. Um, because when we first approved this, we never the council talked about what they wanted, but we never made a motion, I was. like council talked about what they wanted, but we never made a motion about specific sign to order. And then whenever we were, we gave staff that discussion, or Kevin, we gave Kevin Rule, hey, this is what council wanted, then he never, like, he never ordered it. So now there's not a, a vote on file about what sign, and no sign was ever ordered. So I was gonna propose that we install the sign we have, which is twenty four hour parking limit, correct? Oh, you brought it, look at you.
Oh. We'll say this, the pole's already there.
Yeah.
We've got, these are what we have. So we want something that, like, parking.
I think the one on the right is more in alignment with what the neighbors there were upping for, because people need to be able to park it for parties and things, but they don't want people using it as long term review. And then the other sign that is needed is parking in designated spaces only. We installed a bunch of rocks to prevent parking, but apparently people are still somehow driving vehicles onto the tree roots. And sometimes it's not, they, it's equipment at times, too, it's not just a vehicle. So that was the other recommendation based in this, is we already have the poles, this sign actually used to exist there. It said no parking at parking before, but it went, went missing, and we don't have that sign, so we would need to order that sign. So those are the, the things I'm recommending, recommending tonight. Also, one of the signs, I don't know if y'all remember in the meeting, we talked about the parking sign before and I drove through there and it looked like the sign was fixed from the roadwork, because it was standing back upright. Either somebody hit it again, or maybe it was never actually fixed and it was just pushed a different way, but now it's boosted tipped again. So that sign needs better repair, obviously, or potentially to be moved, because if people keep setting it, then it's probably in the wrong spot, right? So that's what this item is, intent of it.
Okay, but specifically, you want to be specific on?
Yeah.
You want to, you want to install the twenty four hour parking sign? You want to purchase and install a parking in designated places only sign and repair the existing directional sign?
Yes, I have a motion.
Okay.
My second.
Question. I'm, I'm not exactly sure what we have out there on the show, we may have something along the lines of designated areas, I don't know exactly what we have.
If we have it, don't order it.
I don't, I, but if there's something specific that it needs to say, we just need to know what.
Parking designated spaces only, I think would be it.
May not say exactly that, but if it's similar, I can bring it in.
I think it's the intent being, because right now, you know, we have an ordinance, that's something people can do, but really they need the sign and the signs are what allow you to enforce it. So without the signs, we can't enforce parking issues on our view.
I'll check and see what we have and we have something along the line of.
Alright, can we vote on the amendment? All in favor, please, right here, one second.
Aye.
Unanimous. Alright, that is the regular agenda, the council considerations for agenda items, the next year, council. I'm gonna say next regular council meetings. Let me just say, if you have something that your hair is on fire and you have to have it for Wednesday, get it to us tomorrow. Yeah, but we, we have it posted by Friday, so for the twenty first, but otherwise your deadline for the next regular meeting is maybe five. So anybody have anything that they are planning to put up there?
Tree board is requesting to be able to replace trees that are in progress by the tree board, Ben and Arbus, losing money in the tree funds. And a separate item, the, we'll have the approval to purchase twenty five single gallon feeds for the fall tree giveaway event, and the number that will be in conjunction.
Thank you.
Second, if you, we're still doing that.
Yeah. You're supposed to.
Well.
I mean, let somebody object, you know, this is, you know, seconded by silence. But then I'll go after the second, so. So again, go ahead, second.
Um, I just wanted to thank all of council, because I know I brought four very large documents. It probably took you a lot of time, um, to review and all the questions, so I appreciate it. One that we kind of got built way faster than I expected, this is. I want to, thank you all.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't have more questions for you, obviously, all did a lot of work.
Anyway, I think they'd be bringing, yeah, they'd, you'd bring the things that you don't mention enough. Second.
Man, we have requested something.
Yeah?
We have requested something.
No, you can't, I mean, we, we have that in the motion.
They have to, we're, we also have to make agenda demands, so.
I understand.
Yeah.
I'm just answering from requests from the owners.
You sent an email, I think we have an email.
Um, announcements? Party Sunday. Where are your shirts? Where are your shirts? We, we do need volunteers before and after to help with set up clean. Anybody that should get there, we'll probably start arriving around, we're just elevenish. Probably make so at noon, till kind of ten, are gonna load in at twelve thirty. And then, and then the festivities really kick off at one. We'll have champagne toast, cake setting announcements, the history wall. Those would be, would be a nice, nice, really nice event, hoping that you can get there, tell your friends, bring your family.
A break, breakdown is the time period when suddenly people aren't around anymore. So if you can save a break down or loop anybody in to help with that, that would be a key.
And Taffy's gonna send something out, an email from the minister. Any other announcements? entertain motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn?
Second.
Alright, we're on here. Nine oh five, nine oh seven.